Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it is 6:30 on the dot, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. Before we go through the agenda, the city clerk, Ms. Chandler Faith Pitts, has a notepad. She's gonna pass that notepad around. This is for public comments, so if you would like to speak when we get down to the public comment section, we're gonna ask you to go ahead and sign your name as she passes that around. And then what we'll do is when it's time, we'll get to that section, we'll either have you, you can stand at your seats, or you're welcome to come to the podium, whatever's easiest for you, okay? To get started, we're gonna skip the invocation. Our pastor was unable to come tonight, so I'm gonna do the call to order and roll call, so I'm gonna start by calling the roll by district. So District 1, Councilmember Tim Sullivan.
Present.
District 2, Councilmember Michael Coker, that's me, I'm present. District 3, Councilmember Kyle Shields.
Present.
District 4, Councilmember and the Mayor Pro Tem, Michael Rudnick.
Present.
And then District 5, Councilmember Doug Ingram.
Present.
Alright, Madam Clerk, if you could note that all five council members are present. If you could, go ahead and stand and join, if you're able, and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, well, thank you everybody for coming. This is, might be our most well-attended meeting we've ever had, and of course, it is in the smallest space that we've ever had it. So, we were like, we'll have no problem moving out of the church. We have like, three to five people that come to our meetings. So, thank you all for being here tonight. This is our new home. I know it doesn't look like much right now, but it is our start. Hopefully, we will have meetings here. The idea is eventually, you'll see this room's empty beside us. The hope is that eventually, we can maybe get a contractor to take out this wall, and obviously, this room will be much bigger. We can kinda put the council at that end and have the seats coming down this way. So, it's not always gonna be this tight and cozy, but I appreciate you guys all being here tonight. We have quite a few things to run through, just to kinda give you a breakdown. We have a, basically, what's gonna be the final adoption of some of the ordinances that we've looked at. That can kinda be a slow and tedious process, so I wanna kinda warn you ahead of time. We're gonna run through each of those. Then we have some different action items that we are going to discuss and talk about. And then, like I said, before we jump into, we are going to have the public comments, so feel free to sign up for those when the pad comes around. Alright, the first thing that we are going to do is discuss the January 16, 2025 minutes. I believe those were sent out to all of the council members. Is there any discussion or amendments that need to be made to the January 16, 2025 minutes? Okay, hearing none, I will make a motion to adopt the January 16, 2025 minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll take a second.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Sullivan. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, by a vote of five, the January 16, 2025 minutes are hereby adopted. The next item is the consideration of the meeting agenda for this evening. Councilmembers, is there any items that need to be added or removed from tonight's agenda?
Just a couple of quick corrections on the third page. And I'm sorry, it just reminded me. Ordinances 129 and 130. They'll say first, I'm sorry, 129 and 133. Both say it's the first read, and then it notes below, we already had the first read. So technically, it's the second read, just to make it correct.
Yeah, so you, I believe, Mr. Riley, that is correct, right? These are the second reads.
All of these are second reads.
Okay. So, we have an amendment from Councilmember Sullivan on K and L, that those should read second reads of those ordinances. Okay, any other amendments?
I believe we may need to add an executive session at the end.
For what purposes, Mayor Pro Tem?
For the purpose of litigation as well as employment.
Okay. So, there is a request to amend the, so this will be after the action items. It'll be, we'll call it J1. We have a, we have a proposed amendment for an executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation as well as employment. Any other amendments?
Mr. Mayor, if we could, our community development director is not here yet, and she will be presenting on the second reads on the ordinances in the zoning resolution. I believe one of them's 133. And, excuse me. The other, I made, that is 95. So I'd ask that we would only vote to until such time as she was here. There have been a couple of additions into the ordinance that she would speak to. They're not substantial, but they're minor, but I think it's important that she would speak to you on those, since she's the one who created those. If we could just move those to the end of the ordinances before the item J, the action item. If we can go forward on the signs, ordinances in the public hearing, how do you check?
Okay, so the amended, proposed amendment is to move item, ordinance item G, as well as L, to the bottom of the ordinances. So we'll leave that.
Yes, please.
Okay, any other proposed amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to, from one of you, to make those amendments to the agenda for this evening.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to move item IG to the end of section I, as well to add executive session for the purpose of litigation and employment. And lastly, did we have one more? Did you have one more, Mayor?
K and L.
Oh yeah, and to amend the reading of items under section I, K, and L, to read second read of ordinance instead of first read of ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Shields. Any other discussion about the agenda for tonight? Okay, hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor of these amendments, of amending the agenda to include these items? All opposed? Okay, the agenda, the amendments are adopted, so I will make a motion at this time to adopt the January 2023, 2025 meeting agenda as amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, the agenda for tonight's meeting is adopted as amendment, as amended. Alright, that'll bring us to H, which is the public comments section. So, what's gonna happen is, the Madam Clerk is gonna read your name. If you don't mind, like I said, feel free. I know we got a lot of people in here. Feel free to come, and you can speak at your location. You can come up to the podium, whatever's more convenient for you. Just my only request is that you state your name, and then your address for the record, and then, public comments are limited to two minutes per individual, okay? So the clerk will let you know when time has expired. Alright, Madam Clerk, has anybody signed up for public comments?
Yes, Tony Lottie.
Lottie.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Actually, brought something for y'all, just so you're aware.
Awesome, thank you.
There should be one for each of you, and I promise I won't talk quick, even though head football coaches usually don't do that. So, my name's Tony Lottie. I'm the head football coach at Second Year High School. And originally, my plan to come was to offer my services to the new city, anything I could do to help in the future. However, this week, I've been dealt with something else. Now I need your help, or at least direction. So, the front page, what you see there is a picture of an automobile accident with one of our young people exiting Second Year High School. The long story short is since October, and this is the second time I've had to give first aid care until paramedics could get there. And so, since October, I have been between congressional member at the state capitol through the Gwinnett Department of Transportation. Long story short is had it all down to where I was gonna meet with residents to sign to put in speed breakers. So what you see on page two is, I've also included details for you. This page two is actually the current Google map for Second Year High School, and it shows the year. There is no exit point, which there is one, okay? The problem is, both accidents were people who were on the road that thought they were on the road, the roundabout that cuts through to Doc, what's it, Doc Hughes, thank you, Doc Hughes. The next page you look at, I went ahead and took Google photos for you. The picture at the top on the left is if you're turning out of Second Year High School. There's approximately 2,000 cars now that are entering and exiting this, and the road that they turn on that deals with you directly is West Rock Quarry Road, and the speed limit for that road is 25 miles an hour, alright? There's, I think, 10 residents that live on that road. Now, the picture at the bottom is your look coming over the hill to turn right into Second Year. What I wanted to call your attention to, and I will forward you all of the Department of Transportation's, I've been in meetings with so many people since October, bottom line is, is that it's in the 95 percentile of 46 miles an hour. After, I hate to say me pitching a fit and doing a political dance as well as I could, that they've even agreed that it's worse than what they thought. So if you look at the data right here, you can see that, so what they did, they first came out and said, "We'll take two weeks' worth of readings of the digital clock. We're gonna clock people coming up and down the road." Then what they did from there, because they thought that the equipment was malfunctioning, they turned around and brought out the strips. So what you're looking at is the data specifically from the Department of Transportation, and as you can see, there was a vehicle clock that going between 55 and 60. There was one 70 to 75 miles an hour, and one for between 90 and 95 miles an hour on that road, okay?
Look, I'll say this, your time's expired, but you can finish.
Do you mind?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, so the T-bone, what's, here, let me tell you what's happening. As I turn the next page, if you look to the 95th percentile of 46.1, according to what the county has told me in meetings that I've been in with them, is if it's over, basically, it's way over the percentile for something has to be done. It's not a safe environment. So if you look, that is actually test two. So up in the top left corner of that page you're looking at, you'll see a little number two on site number. So this next page is actually the other strips that are a little further up, and as you can see, it clocks 15 cars going between 45 and 50, seven between 50 and 55, two between 70 and 75 miles an hour. That's the, that's referenced up in the top left. Now, if you'll turn the page for me one more time. The next page, you see, this is the traffic report that the DOT generated from 10:22 to 11:06, and the max speed, somebody was clocked on 10:25 at 12:25 in the afternoon going 90 miles an hour on that road. If you look down at the bottom, the 85 percentile, it's averaging over 45 miles an hour. And then the next page is another report of what was tracked from 11:07. So these are not the same instances. These are all different instances. From on 11:07, somebody was clocked going 100 miles an hour on 11:16 at 12 o'clock. So, the reason that I'm here, as I said, originally, I wanted to come and meet y'all and say, "Hey, if there's something I can do as head football coach, please reach out, whether it's community activity or whatever, as you're getting the city going." The last page is an email correspondence that I got this week from Ms. Golan at the Gwinnett County Department of Transportation. So, as you can see in the email, everything was set to go, and basically, what happened was, 'cause I'm very much concerned for the residents around that road, I'm very much concerned for our young people that enter and exit, and if you'll see, if you visit that road, there's a sign there, that is the main entrance now for pickups. Like I said, you can look at the report, there's over 2,000 cars per day on that road now. So, the reason I'm here is because the last stage of this, everybody felt like there needs to be speed breakers to protect the residents and protect the kids. So, I was going to go door-to-door with the help of my school SRO officer who volunteered to go with me, just to make sure the residents knew we were trying to look out for them, and, as well. And one of them I've already spoke with, they were in favor of it. Well, then I got a call two days ago from the Gwinnett County, that basically, she said, they took it to their director, and they have said it is now the City of Mulberry's, okay? That they do not have, it's on hold now, that because of the fact that there's not, I'm just repeating what I was told, 'cause I have no idea the validity of this, but basically, there's not a written agreement between the City of Mulberry and Gwinnett County Department of Transportation, and so, it's on hold until, and so, which is not acceptable to me. So, basically, I'm here asking for your help, so I can try to protect those residents as well as our kids. And the last thing I'm gonna say about that, so you can direct me on where I need to go next. I'm a parent of three, and I'm a grandfather of four. And one of the worst things I think as a parent you get is a phone call from the police saying, "Your child's been in an accident, please come to the hospital." And for me to run down to that section and provide first care for one of my kids, and I'm responsible for everybody in that building, is how I look at it, as well as the residents that back up to our school. So, something needs to be done, and so I'm asking you, your help of where can I go next, short of me standing out there. And I can tell you, from the multiple meetings I've had at the Department of Transportation, they've all agreed, it's way worse than I. I would've never in my mind thought someone's going 100 miles an hour on that road. But the accident that's gonna happen, again, is a T-bone accident, okay? Yes, there is a stop sign at the end of Second Year's property that says to stop. However, if you look to your right, it is a dead-end circle. There is no place to go. So what's happened now, since we've been open for two and a half, almost three years, is the complacency of coming over that hill, they're turning right to go into Second Year. Both cars that were involved in the accidents were on the wrong road. So, maps are still not updated properly, and so, I'm here to, like I said, originally, it was to offer you my services, but based on a phone call two days ago, I need you to tell me where I go next. And would you please review it, and anything I can do to help, because I'm not waiting until we lose somebody.
Sure, I appreciate that. So thank you, so, and I appreciate you telling us what the county has told you. I mean, I will say this, so we have what's called a two-year transition statute, okay? Where the county's still responsible to maintain all the roads within Mulberry, okay?
Yes, sir.
So, that, whether or not there's an agreement or not, and that agreement will come eventually, but they are still obligated to do that. That is in the statute, okay? So what I'd like to do, I'd love to set an appointment for you, me, and the transportation person from Gwinnett to all get in the same room and talk about that.
More than happy to.
But we can talk about that after. If you need to leave early, just send me a message.
I'll, hey, I'll do what you need to do.
Perfect.
I put my business card, I clipped that to it, so y'all will have access to my personal cellphone as well as my school address.
Awesome, okay. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Alright, Madam Clerk, who's next?
Chris, I'm sorry.
Frudiger.
Thank you, sir.
I knew you'd have problems with that.
Mr. Frudiger, if you could say your name and then your address for the record for us.
My name is Chris Frudiger, and I, my address is 616668 Auburn Ridge Way in the City of Mulberry.
That's great, thank you.
And I have, and I'm gonna try to be brief as I can, and I'm not sure I'm in the right place too, because I'm the coach, 'cause I don't know what the city's responsibilities are yet.
Thanks for your service.
I am the president of the HOA of our subdivision, which is.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, yeah, we did, we did talk. I guess you remember, 'cause I got the one eye, you know? You don't forget that. But I'm the president of the HOA of our subdivision. And you can see on that little diagram where our subdivision is, on Auburn Road. Before you get to Jim Moore Road, it's the last residential area before you get to Jim Moore Road. It is a 55-plus subdivision. We have, it's a small subdivision, 52 homes. Most of our residents, I'd say 70%, are retirees. We really have no amenities except for a fire pit and a pavilion with some chairs. And the only, the other thing we have that is used the most is a trail that goes all the way around the perimeter of the property. And you can see that on the second, it shows the property here, and you can see a little line that goes all the way around the property, all the perimeter of the property. That is a walking trail for our residents. And it's used quite a bit, and it's hilly and wooded in some places, and maybe open a little bit, especially back here around the detention pond. But why I'm here is, the property next to, just east of our property, is a five-acre plot. You can see it right, it's kinda starts real narrow and then widens out into five acres back there. But that property is currently owned by, let me see, 10,000 Buddhas Summit Monastery Corporation. And they've owned it, I think, since, I don't know, they've owned it for several years. They paid like five or six thousand, $100,000 for it when they bought it. But now, it's up for sale again. And it's some activities going on, it's been surveyed, and the real estate agent is addressing her selling to developers and builders, which is common, which is understandable. It's five acres, I mean, the builder could put four, five houses in there, I guess, if he wanted to. But right now, it's zoned RA 200, and our concern is, right now, we have a very quiet, peaceful neighborhood. The trail is very quiet, it's, like I said, it's through the woods in some cases. But on the eastern side, next to this property, there's some open areas where you see the property, you see the house. I brought some photographs and I forgot to give them to you, but you'll have to pass them down. That's just some photographs I took from the trail that borders this property. And, and it, we just want to see if there's any way to ensure that we can get some kind of buffer between our property and whatever goes in next door, whether it's just one house, or three or four, five houses, whatever, that there's some kind of buffer, like a privacy fence or something, to protect our walking trail from others coming in and the peace and quiet that we've always enjoyed since, since we've been there. So, that's why I'm here. I just wanna see what could be done to ensure that whoever buys the property, if it's a developer, what he's gonna do there, if he could somehow put in some kind of buffer between us and the property.
It's hard to know, right? I mean, obviously, we don't know what they're putting there, right? But when this, if this needs to be rezoned, this will come before the City of Mulberry. So this will come before this body, it'll also come before the Mulberry Planning Commission. So what I would recommend you do is when, you know, you should get notice of that. And so, when that happens, you by all means come back and we can talk about that.
Okay, that sounds great.
I appreciate you being here.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, Madam Clerk, who's next?
There's nobody else.
Okay. Sure, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Chris Smith. I am a resident of the City of Mulberry. I live on Thompson Mill Road. I'm here tonight as your police chief. I am the assistant chief of the Uniform Division for the Gwinnett County Police Department. I want you guys to know that the Gwinnett County Police Department is your police department. So whatever you guys need policing-wise, you guys are split across two police precincts in the City of Mulberry. District 4, which is our east precinct, and our major over there is Major Bailey, and then the north precinct, which is over behind Molla, Georgia, your police major for that area is Major Kane, Amanda Kane, actually. Major Bailey is here tonight. He is the, like I said, the east precinct commander. But you guys are split over two police districts, so we have several cities in the county. I think you guys are the only city that's split over two police districts. But I want you guys to know, the Gwinnett County Police Department is here to provide police services for the City of Mulberry, and we are here to support the city and whatever they need as far as law enforcement services go. So I wanna introduce myself, introduce my team. I'll leave my card for you guys. We are very interested in working with you guys and keeping the City of Mulberry safe, like we do for all of Gwinnett County and all our cities, cities that we provide police services for. So please, if you guys need anything, do not hesitate to reach out.
I hear there's one speeding on West Rock Quarry Road.
I'm on it. I'm on it. I'm on it.
Awesome, thank you for being here.
Sir.
Okay, so that will conclude the public comments. Is there any council comments this evening?
So, I've asked the mayor for the other council members to include moving forward just any comments from council after the mayor's opening comments. I don't necessarily have any tonight. I'm excited to see this many people here. I see some that I've invited, some that I've spoken to. I appreciate you all being here. I know, I'll speak for myself, I'm very excited to continue to serve. I put out some messaging last week on my campaign Facebook page about a planning committee, and taking two members from my district, and I've had an overwhelmingly strong response to that, probably north of 20 people. So, I just wanna let everyone know that I will be communicating back to everyone, if I haven't already, I think there's only one or two that I've missed, about the plans to get some sort of application for that and find out what's, who the best candidates for this planning committee are. So, that's my plan. I think the rest of the council is gonna do something similar, and we'll have any type of rezonings come before the planning committee first to make recommendations to this body here. So, I'm also going to start having probably monthly coffee meetings where it's just open, anybody that wants to come for District 4, come meet, talk, and, you know, whatever issue you need to bring, if you don't wanna bring it before the full council. If it's specific to District 4, we can talk about that as well. So, more information to come on that as well. So that's all I've got for somebody.
And, Kyle Shields, District 3, which is, if you don't know your districts, we do have the maps out there for you to look at, but basically, Jim Moore Road all the way over to Auburn and Route 24. So it's mostly Hamilton Mill and then over to Auburn area. I too, I'm trying to get committees, and I feel that the best way to get involved is through committees, and it just shows with local government how well it works when everybody kinda becomes a part of the team to come together. And we've already reached out, and we have some wonderful individuals that are willing to take charge and run with the ball. Problem is, we're trying to get that ball inflated enough for them to give it to you. So, we're almost there. We're almost ready to make that happen.
Happy to help.
Also, like to add, I've also published the same thing. I've got some people reached out to Councilman Rudnick about wanting to be involved, but they were in my district. So he forwarded to me, and I appreciate that. I've got four or five folks as well. I'll be holding impromptu meetings, interviews, if you will, with the folks that express interest. Make sure they're in mind in alliance with ours, the council, and myself. But yeah, I agree. Second, third, not second, but thirdly, it is the way to get involved, and I am hugely surprised at the large crowd. I think that's great. I read so many times on Nextdoor and Facebook, blah, blah, blah. I don't know what's going on. It's like, show up. Participate, and you will. And I thank you all for coming.
Mayor, I guess I'll also, I can say things, since we all have, so I won't go on repeat. But we've had a few people in District 5 that expressed interest, so, if I don't talk to you, please, please come talk to me. The other thing I'd mention is, as the mayor said, this is, the city office is a work in progress, so it's gonna take a lot of love and attention from folks in the community. So if you have services that you can offer on a, on a budget that approximates zero, we'd love to.
Yeah, I put out the message for a planning committee, 20 people responded. I asked people to come paint, no one responded. I also did wanna add one more thing, that this council here, this is the first time all of us have been on city council before, and I know from a public standpoint, it may not appear that things are moving as quickly as everybody would like, maybe it does, but I promise you, all five of these people up here are working way more than they were working 60 days ago to get things going. And there's a list of 10,000 things that we have to do. We've gotta be in compliance, and that's what Mr. Riley keeps us in compliance. And so, things are moving. We're making progress, not just every week, but every day. And we will continue to do that and work as hard as we possibly can for the people of the city.
Alright, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Alright, then we're gonna go ahead and move on to item I, which is the second reads of the ordinances. So, Mr. Riley, I will turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First item in I is item A, ordinance number 250148. This is second read of an ordinance, the City of Mulberry creating Chapter 34 Land Development Regulation, creating Framework for Department for Land Development. The first read was held on January 1, 2025. Presentation was made on that date.
Is there any discussion about ordinance 250148? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 250148. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Ordinance 250148 is hereby adopted.
Next item is item B. This is ordinance 250153. This is a first read on January 1, 2025. This is a second read of an ordinance, the City of Mulberry creating Chapter 54 Signs, creating a framework for regulation and signage. Mayor, and this, this item will require a public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Riley. So we have, on this sign ordinance, we have a public hearing, which means that we will limit, for those, for those that wanna speak in favor of the sign ordinance, or for any that want to oppose the sign ordinance, we will open the floor to you. Each side will be limited to 10 minutes. The clerk will keep the time. So, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of ordinance 250153, the sign ordinance? Hearing none, I will close public comment for those in favor. Would anyone like to speak in opposition of ordinance 250153? Hearing none, I will close public comments at this time. Is there any other discussion with the council of ordinance 250153? Is there any other discussion with the council of ordinance 250153? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 250153. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? By unanimous vote, ordinance 250153 is hereby adopted.
Next ordinance we have is number C, ordinance 250157. This is a zoning resolution that the first read was on January 1st, 2025. Mayor, I am going to ask that we move this item back to the end of the item, the back end of the items under I, because I'd like to have that presentation made by the Community Development Director.
Do we need to take a vote on that, or are we fine?
If you, if you just defer that, that'll be fine.
I approve that. Let's, let's move on to D.
The next one is Item D, ordinance 250182. This is the second read of an ordinance for the City of Mulberry, Georgia, creating Chapter 14 Businesses, creating a framework for operation and licenses of various businesses within the City of Mulberry. First read was held on January 2nd, 2025. There will need to be a public hearing on this one also, inasmuch as there is a, a component in there for setting, setting the rates for the charges for the business licenses.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, just like before, there will be 10 minutes for those in favor, that want to speak in favor, and those that want to speak opposed to ordinance 250182 regarding business licenses. At this time, is there anyone that like, would like to speak in favor of ordinance 250182? Hearing none, I'll close public comments for those to speak in favor. Would anyone like to speak in opposition of ordinance 250182? Hearing none, I will close public comments. Is there any discussion with the council regarding ordinance 250182? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 250182 pertaining to business licenses. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? By unanimous vote, ordinance 250182 is hereby adopted.
Next ordinance we have is Item E. This is ordinance 250186. This is second read of an ordinance, the City of Mulberry creating Chapter 34 Land Development Regulation, creating the framework for requirements for land development. First read was held for this item on January 2nd, 2025.
Is there any discussion about ordinance 250186? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 250186. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? By unanimous vote, ordinance 250186 is hereby adopted.
The next item is Item F. This is ordinance 250191. This is second read of an ordinance, the City of Mulberry, Georgia, creating Chapter 54 Signs, creating a framework for regulating signage. First read on this item was on January 2nd, 2025. This will be the second read. This will require a public hearing as the previous adoption of the sign ordinance did.
I have a quick question. Is that not the same one as B?
I believe that you'll find that that was on, the first read was on January 1st on that item.
Okay.
This was, we had a first read on January 2nd.
Okay.
Okay, similar, same. 10 minutes for each side. Was, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of ordinance 250191, where the first read was on January 2nd of 2025? Hearing none, I'll close public comment for those in favor. Would anyone like to speak in opposition of ordinance 250191? Hearing none, I'll close public comment. Is there any discussion with the council? Then I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 250191. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? By unanimous, unanimous vote, ordinance 250191 is hereby adopted.
I am G. You've moved to the end of Items I, under I, Mayor already. The next one would be Item H. This is ordinance 2501120. Second read of an ordinance, the City of Mulberry, Georgia, creating Chapter 14 Businesses, creating a framework for operation and licenses of various businesses within the City of Mulberry. This is, the first read was held on January 3rd, 2025. This is the same ordinance as you previously adopted that was, first read was on an earlier date. This also will require a public hearing.
Is there, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in favor of ordinance number 2501120? Hearing none, I will close public comment for those in favor. Would anyone like to speak in opposition to ordinance 2501120? Hearing none, I will close public comment. Any discussion with the council? Then I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2501120. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? By unanimous vote, ordinance 2501120 is hereby adopted.
Next item we have is Item I under Section I. This is ordinance 2501124. This is the second read of an ordinance, the City of Mulberry creating Chapter 34 Land Development Regulation, creating a framework for requirements of land development. This is, the first read was held on January 3rd, 2025. This is the same ordinance that you previously adopted that had been, had a read earlier than the January 3rd date.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in favor of ordinance number 2501124? Oh, I'm sorry, there's no public hearing requirement for that one.
Not on this one. This is, it's not part of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Okay. Then is there any discussion amongst the council regarding ordinance 2501124? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2501124. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Ingram. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? By unanimous vote, ordinance 2501124 is hereby adopted.
The next one is Item J. That is, I believe you moved that to the, to the last part of Section I also. And the next item after that would be Item K. This is ordinance 2501129. This is first read of an ordinance, the City of Mulberry, Georgia, creating Chapter 54 Signs, creating a framework for regulating signage. First read of this item was on January 3rd, 2025, so it will require a public hearing. This is the same ordinance you previously adopted that was read on an earlier date than the January 3rd date.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in favor of ordinance 2501129 regarding signage? Hearing none, I'll close public comment. Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition of ordinance 2501129? Hearing none, I will close public comment. Any discussion amongst the council? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2501129 pertaining to signage. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Sullivan. Any other discussion? Then I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, by unanimous vote, ordinance 2501129 is hereby adopted.
Mayor, if I could go back up to Item J, I was mistaken on that one, that we needed to hold on that one. So if we could revisit that one, that one does not require the public hearing, and that's not one that has been amended by the, by the planning, the planning director. So if we could go back to J, and that would be ordinance 2501128. Second read of an ordinance of the City of Mulberry, creating Chapter 50 Planning and Development, creating a framework for development regulations, land use plans, planning commissions, policy on withdrawal of zoning amendment applications, buffers, definitions, buffer regulation, landscape regulation for other purposes. That first read was on January 3rd, 2025.
Is there any discussion amongst the council regarding ordinance 2501128? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2501128. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? By a vote of five, the ordinance number 2501128 is hereby adopted.
Mayor, that concludes all the ordinances we have, except the ones that are, we're waiting for the presentation by the Community Development Direction, Director. If I could ask you all to go, hold those reads at this point in time. And because, because they are zoning ordinance, I would ask that you amend the agenda at this point in time to move those items to, the items that you're still holding for the Community Development Director to be had after the action items, and to make a motion to, to amend the, amend the agenda to move those, those ordinances are presently being held until after the action items in Items J.
So I will make a motion at the city attorney's request to move Item C, or, I'm sorry, Item I, C, I G, and I L to after the action items J. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? And at this time, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, it's unanimous that Items I, C, I G, and I L will be moved until after the action items, and the agenda is hereby amended. All right, ladies and gentlemen, moving on to J, we're going to go ahead and move on. The first item there is JA, which is adoption of Resolution 250108 for Germa. So for those of you that were here before, we, Germa is the, Georgia Municipal Association has a wing that allows us to buy our liability insurance through, basically, we pool with all the other cities. It's an insurance pool through, through Germa is the name of the entity. We had adopted the contract, and so we have now been given by Germa a resolution. Every one of the council members should have a copy there in front of them of that resolution. Basically, is there any discussion about adopting this resolution, which would enroll the City of Mulberry into the Germa program? Okay, hearing none, then I will entertain a motion on this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-01-08 as presented.
Okay, is there, do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? By unanimous vote of five, Resolution Number 20250108, the resolution authorizing membership into the Georgia Interlocal Risk Management Agency is hereby adopted. Okay, moving on to Action Item B. This is a resolution that is pertaining to a, some work that's being done at Hamilton Mill Road and the Interstate 85. And for those that are here, that, that don't know, and Councilman Shields, if you want to jump in, I know you've kind of taken the lead on some of this as well, is that the Department of, the Georgia Department of Transportation is doing extensive work at the Hamilton Mill I-85 Bridge. I don't know if that's been, if, if, how many people know that yet? But basically, the idea is they want to limit the amount of traffic that is backing up into I-85 from Hamilton Mill. It's created a very dangerous situation. You have semi trucks doing 80 miles an hour, 70 miles an hour, and then traffic is backed up from Hamilton Mill Road down onto Interstate 85 northbound. And so the idea is they want to put some additional turn lanes in. It will actually be a three-turn lane that will allow you to turn towards the Hamilton Mill neighborhood there at that location. There has been some community discussion about this item, and some of the concerns were that if the DOT is going to address that intersection, and then also they're going to address the intersection of 124 and Hamilton Mill Road, there are potentially maybe some additional improvements that maybe the City of Mulberry can work with the DOT. Because we know that's one of the worst bottleneck areas, I think, in the entire city. And so they are open to having discussions with us. And so we have a resolution here that basically discusses, gives us the authority, basically, to continue to work with the DOT as well as our state representatives to see what we can do to try to improve that intersection. Do you mind? You maybe, you want to talk about it? Maybe show that picture?
Sure, sure, sure. And I'll have it up here online if you wanted to come by and take a look. That's the only one I got, so, so don't take it from me here. But this shows you kind of the overview, and it's phased out into two different phases. Whenever you're talking about major road construction, it takes a lot of entities and a lot of moving parts. First off is the state. The state sees that there's an issue right here with Highway 85, with the cars backing up onto the freeway. As Michael was stating, safety is paramount, and so they're trying to move those vehicles off the freeway exit into a safer location. By doing that, they're going to go five lanes across. I've never seen five lanes across on a freeway off-ramp. I mean, to us, we all know that that means that that intersection is just overblown. Really, in the big picture of things, but this is way down the road, because it takes millions of dollars to do this, and a lot of moving parts is to make another off-ramp. I mean, that, that would be the common sense move of it. But right now, this is what they have in the funds, and this is what we have to work with. Now, as you know, as you move a bottleneck up, what happens down the road? That bottleneck continues unless something opens up. So Phase One is moving them off the freeway, Highway 85. We're going to have three lanes turning right, two lanes turning left. When you get onto Hamilton Mill Parkway, where you make the left-hand turn onto 124 by the QT between the BP right there, there's going to be three lanes turning left. It's going to encroach upon the Hamilton Mill entrance over there, where they're actually going to have to take out the grass sections, the white fencing, trees, the whole bit. It's going to get very close over there to the parking lot, to the pickleball courts, to the pool. So that's a concern for Hamilton Mill. Hamilton Mill's in District Three. That's why we've been kind of working with this. So we really kind of brought this up to the DOT, and we're having a lot of residents' input on this. I'll tell you, it's the residents that really help out. The more you speak up and the more you kind of write letters to the right people, letters, I'm old, but emails to the right people, it really does help out. So if, if you feel strongly about this, and I'm sure leaving Hamilton Mill or on 124, who's sat there over three signals just trying to get out of there? I mean, it, it, it takes a long time. So we're really trying to work with the DOT, with Gwinnett, and also the state to really kind of make it better than what they have addressed, because there can be work for improvement.
And I'll say too, for, for those of you that live in my district, District Two, or District One, and the second are people who are here today. So this, we're also trying to see if we can address what's going on the other side. I mean, getting past Sardis Church and that wall, I mean, you guys know firsthand how bad it is, right? So this, this letter does authorize us to kind of have a discussion with them. Hey, how can we rework, they're not going to build us a new bridge. I mean, that's not going to happen. But how can we rework the lanes to make it more efficient for the flow of traffic? So, and so does the council have any more discussion or comments about this item?
I'd like to add something. As, as my experience, I work a whole peak shrink. I come up 85 north to come home, and you're right, it backs up sometimes a good half mile. You're on the through lane, can't get off the road. When you get off the road, and I know, Councilman Shields said they're going to expand it to five lanes, so it'll make it look like Florenceville, Swanee, or Parkland exit, basically. They have five there. But they also have like a four-mile-long exit ramp. I think some logic and thought needs to be put into extending the exit ramp as it exists, a good half mile down the road. Granted, you're going to have five lanes turning, and that'll take some people off the road. But you also have, and I've seen it on a weekly basis, there are an awful lot of people that get off that road intending to turn left, but they pull up in a right-turn lane, and then get to the very end, signal left, and force their way in. And I don't know if this will help the lane blockage either. That's our other biggest thing, is people come across from the west going east toward Hamilton Mill, and they'll pull out into the intersection, and they block traffic. Or they'll, they'll think, oh, I'm going to go over there, and I'm out of the intersection, but truly not. People can't turn right, and it just sends it further back down the highway. So I think if we, some wording in there said, make that longer, that might alleviate some of it as well in a, in a traffic con, we can't rule those.
Okay, so is there any other discussion about Resolution 20250109, and then the attached letter that would basically allow, well, it would allow the mayor to sign that letter to basically engage in discussions with the DOT on behalf of the City of Mulberry to try to improve the intersection? Any other discussion?
I have just one quick question, Mayor. What's the envisioned timeline? Have they spoken?
Great question. So they, they're hoping to start, and Councilman Shields can maybe help me with this. They're stepping, it's going to be two phases. The phase to add the exit ramp widening to get more roads, cars off the road, off the interstate, should start happening this year, as soon as this year. They said the next phase, which would be addressing the 124 and Hamilton Mill Road intersection, is likely not going to begin until next year. So just so you know. Great question.
And I have maybe a question, Councilman Shields. The, so the recommendations, these four recommendations you put in here, what's the feedback you've gotten from your, you know, from the constituents in the district around, are they concerned about how this looks?
Yeah, that was the whole reasoning, is Hamilton Mill has a lot of committees, having 2,200 homes. It's almost like they're mini-city within a city. And so they, they really do have a lot of committees that do this, and they have a committee that actually looks at traffic.
Yeah, because it's kind of an iconic piece of the, the way it looks when you come in, right? Hamilton Mill with the water wheel on it.
Luckily, the water wheel isn't going to be affected. It's, it's the turning left portion of it, that large grass area up to the monument. It, I'd say about a quarter of it is probably going to disappear. And we want to know, what are they, the residents want to know, what are they going to do with it? Are they going to beautify it? Are they going to, you know, try and make it the same way? We really don't know yet. I think things we're moving, steamrolling ahead, ahead without Hamilton Mill, they'll kind of get involved. Once they got involved, I think it kind of threw a little bit of a room stick in the spokes for the DOT, so, which is a good thing, because we're, we're kind of just slowing it down, and, you know, if you're going to do it, do it right.
Right, so the whole resolution, Mayor, is about how can we just have more input for the citizens, right?
Yeah, again, I think the Yeah, again, I think the concern is this might address the traffic coming off the interstate, but it doesn't necessarily, you know, what about the traffic coming from Mill Creek, or the people coming from the Hamilton-Mill neighborhood, or, to your point, District 5 people coming from, you know, 324, coming that way? Like, it doesn't, it doesn't address all the other issues. It really just puts a Band-Aid on the problem of getting the traffic off. So, is there some solution that we can do? We're already spending the money. Is there some solution we can do to kind of help it?
Yeah.
Yeah, to help it out at all.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? Okay, then, at this time, I, I will entertain a motion for Resolution 250109, which is a resolution regarding the discussions with the DOT, as well as the letter authorizing the mayor to transport the letter to the Georgia Department of Transportation.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 250109 as presented pertaining to DOT projects of Hamilton-Mill Road, State Route 124, and I-85.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? And just so I'm clear, that motion is to adopt the Resolution 20250109 and to authorize the mayor to send the attached letter?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, at this time, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Resolution number 250109 is hereby adopted, and the mayor is authorized to sign and transmit the letter to the Georgia Department of Transportation on behalf of the city of Mulberry. Alright, let's moving on. Item C is a, one of the things that the city of Mulberry's gonna need is we're going to need some municipal judges. And I will say this, there were two municipal judges that were very kind to this council, swore many of us in, right, when we first got elected, and, and we just called them, and they made it happen instantly. And they are phenomenal judges. They are very good people. They do municipal work at some of the other cities. Kyle, I'll let you probably talk a little bit about this one too, if you don't mind.
No, I don't know. The city of Mulberry is very lucky to have these two individuals step up for us. Lots of experience. If I went through, we'd be here for an hour with all the experience that's going on. So, we're quite blessed to be able to rely upon that. So first off, I'd like to introduce the Honorable Graham McKinnon up here. He's going to be appointed tonight as, as chief judge, and the Honorable Margaret Washburn right over here. And she too will also be appointed tonight, so they will be your judges for the city of Mulberry. So.
Assuming, assuming that we've let them in, but yes, yes, yes. We gotta vote, but yes.
Oh, yeah, okay. Sorry. My fault.
That's okay. Is there any discussion about the council about, about either the Honorable Graham McKinnon as the chief judge, or the Honorable Margaret Washburn as the associate judge for the city of Mulberry?
No, the only comment I'd like to make, Mayor, is that, you know, I think that all of us appreciate the country we live in. We appreciate the rule of law and, you know, what you did for the city and swearing in the council members. We really appreciate that. You put politics aside and, you know, just chose the law, so thank you.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay, then at this point, we have in front of us Resolution number 2501, I believe, Madam Clerk, this would be 10, correct? So, 250110, which is a resolution appointing Graham McKinnon as the chief judge of the municipal court of the city of Mulberry, Georgia. At this time, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 25, 20250110, which is the resolution adopting the Honorable Graham McKinnon as the chief judge for Mulberry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Shields. Is there any discussion? Alright, hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, but it's unanimous by a vote of five that the Resolution number 20250110, appointing Graham McKinnon as the chief judge of the municipal court of the city of Mulberry, Georgia, is hereby adopted. Judge McKinnon, if you could sit tight for one second, we'll go ahead and swear, we'll do the swearing-in if you don't mind. Let's move on to what would be Resolution number 250111, proposed resolution appointing Margaret Washburn as associate judge of the municipal court of the city of Mulberry, Georgia. Is there any discussion about Resolution 250111? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 250111, appointing Margaret Washburn as the associate judge of the municipal court of the city of Mulberry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Shields. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, it's unanimous by a vote of five. Resolution 250111, appointing Margaret Washburn as associate judge of municipal court of the city of Mulberry, Georgia, is hereby adopted. Okay. Alright, since both our judges are here, if it's okay, as the mayor, I am authorized to deliver their oath to swear them in for the city of Mulberry, so I want to ask them to come forward if they don't mind, and we will do that really quickly.
History.
Houston said for you to tell Katie hello.
Okay, let's see if I can, I'm gonna put these up here. Okay, if you both could, could raise your red hand, say aye, state your name.
Aye, Margaret Washburn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I'll faithfully execute.
The office of municipal court judge.
The office of municipal court judge.
Of the city of Mulberry.
Of the city of Mulberry.
And will, will to do the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Georgia.
The Constitution of the state of Georgia.
And the charter.
And the charter.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And regulations of the city of Mulberry.
And the regulations of the city of Mulberry.
I'm not the holder of any unaccounted for public money.
I'm not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
I'm not the holder of any office.
I'm not the holder of any office.
Of trust.
Of trust.
Under the government.
Under the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Or any other foreign, or any foreign state which I.
Or any foreign state which I.
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
And prohibited from holding.
And prohibited from holding.
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office.
I'm otherwise qualified to hold said office.
According to the Constitution and the laws of Georgia.
According to the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia.
And will hold said office according, I'm sorry, I will truthfully.
I will truthfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
Furthermore.
Furthermore.
I will perform the duties of my office.
I'll perform the duties of my office.
In the best interest of the city of Mulberry.
In the best interest of the city of Mulberry.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear.
Without fear.
Favor.
Favor.
Affections.
Affections.
Reward or expectation thereof.
Rewards or expectations thereof.
In addition.
In addition.
I swear that I will administer justice.
I swear that I will administer justice.
Without respect to persons.
Without respect to persons.
And do equal rights to the poor and the rich.
And do equal rights to the poor and the rich.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties incumbent on me as a judge.
And perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a judge.
Of the municipal court of this state.
Of the municipal court of this state.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
And agreeably to the laws and constitution of this state.
And agreeably to the laws and the constitution of this state.
And the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
If you could say I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That's easy for you to say.
Thank you. Just very briefly, Judge McKinnon and I have been municipal court judges in the state of Georgia for many years. This is actually coming up on forty years for me for city of Duluth, and also for city of Sugar Hill, Peachtree Corners. I filled in for Judge McKinnon, Judge McKinnon's filled in for me. And where else do you preside?
I preside in Brazelton and Flowery Branch, which are neighborish to Mulberry. And it is an honor, and I appreciate the opportunity to do this.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the, the courtesy, but also the trust that you, being here, have given the new mayor, Councilman Shields, and that you would let us be your inaugural judges for your inaugural court. And it's, it's an honor. Thank you very much. It truly is.
Our chief judge McKinnon, if you could just sign in for us.
Make sure you sign the right one.
I think I did it right.
Okay.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
Hi, Michael. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Alright, thank you all for sitting tight on that.
Alright, thank you, guests.
Alright, thank you. Alright, that brings us to item, or, that brings us to item E on the schedule, which is adopt the permit fee schedule. The, that is Resolution number 20250112 regarding the, the permit and fee schedule.
I have the planning director who can speak to all of these.
Perfect. That'd be great. This is Rebecca Kiefer. She is with, she's with Clark Patterson-Lee. She's done a phenomenal job kind of helping us get going with the permitting and the, and the, and the planning, so I will turn it over to you, Ms. Kiefer. Thank you.
Yeah. So, this first fee schedule is to kind of set us up to be able to accept permits when we are able to get up and running. So, this is just the first in a long line of getting those ducks in a row to be able to process those permits. So, we have adapted this from Gwinnett County's fee schedule, and asked that Mayor and State Council adopt the fee schedule as presented.
Is there, is there any questions of the council for Ms. Kiefer regarding this fee schedule?
I have one real quick, Mayor. I'm also gonna stall a little bit because Councilman Gwinnett had user restaurants. I was just gonna ask a quick question regarding, there we go, see my tactics worked. I was just gonna ask a quick question regarding, so this is, all of the, the fee structure is just basically coming from Gwinnett County. So, residents in, in the new city of Mulberry are not gonna experience any changes in their cost structure from what it would have been when we were unincorporated Gwinnett?
First, Mr. I can point out a couple of changes. One, for the inspections, there is, we added in just a penalty for canceling inspections. That's a fifty-dollar fee. And then, where you see the valuation for, let me find it. For permit fees, and this is based on our contract. So, in calculating the valuation, this is on the final page, where it's eight dollars per thousand is how we calculate the construction value. That impacts extensive renovation projects valued at seventy-five-thousand dollars or greater. It is eight dollars per thousand is the charge for the permit. And that is different from Gwinnett's.
Any other questions from the council members? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 20250112, a resolution to adopt the fee schedule.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 250112 as the fee schedule as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? It's unanimous. Resolution 20250112 is hereby adopted, which is the fee schedule for the city of Mulberry. Okay, that brings us to, the next item is the ICC table evaluation for permitting. Ms. Kiefer, if you can explain what that is for us too.
So, this is put out biannually by the International Code Council. It is an estimate of the cost to do construction based on the type of construction and, and type of, kind of type of use that it is. So, this is something that we would adopt. They come out sometime in February and in August, so this is kind of the first round. We will ask that this be updated because they are updated so frequently. But this is that, that value, eight dollars per thousand, is how that is calculated. So, the thousand dollars, dollar increments, what you do is you take the square footage, multiply it by this construction value per square foot, and that's what gives you your estimated value of construction. And that's how we would calculate that eight dollars per thousand construct, permit fee, forgive me.
Any questions from the council? Okay, hearing none, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution number 20250113, which will adopt the International Code Council's building valuation data table for the city of Mulberry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ingram. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Alright, it's unanimous by a vote of five. Resolution number 20250113, adopting the International Code Council's building valuation table, is hereby adopted. Okay. Next one, item G is to adopt the documents referenced in the UDO. Ms. Kiefer, if you maybe you can talk about that one too?
Absolutely. As we kind of run through the Unified Development Ordinance, there are a series of documents that are referenced in, in those regulations. So, there might be street design requirements and things that are not in the actual text of the UDO. So, what adopting these documents does is allow us to have that full breadth of documentation to be able to fully regulate everything that is in the UDO by reference. And so, those exhibits are the Stormwater Management Manual, the Storm Sewer Pipe Standards, the Department of Water Resources Water Main Design and Sanitary Sewer Design and Construction Standards and Specifications, Traffic Calming Design Guide, the Long Range Road Classification Map, the Open Space and Greenway Master Plan, the 2045 Unified Plan, and the Future Development Map.
Any questions for Ms. Kiefer regarding these additional documents which are adopted by reference? Hearing none, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 20250114, which is a resolution adopting standards, policy documents, and maps by reference, and included herein as exhibits. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? By a vote of five, the Resolution 250114 is hereby adopted. Alright, the next item is item H, to lift the moratorium for occupational tax renewals on Monday, January 27, 2025. Ms. Kiefer, if you could kind of give us an update of how we're looking for those occupational taxes that gets.
Yes, so we are in the process of working as a team to kind of build out the permitting system that will accept those, will be able to accept payment. So, what, and be able to kind of establish what the minimum documentation we need is. One of those, just for ease of use for all of the transfer, effectively transfer, they had licenses December 31, 2024 with Gwinnett County. Then they would be picking up and renewing here with city of Mulberry. So, really, the documentation is fairly simple. We want to make sure we see an active license from December 31, 2024, and then be able to issue those licenses. And then, subsequent to that, at a later date, be able to process the new ones, since there is some more documentation that we need to secure, and we want to be able to get through and process and issue these renewal licenses, kind of as a priority, but shortly thereafter, except the others. In looking at what needs to be lifted from a moratorium standpoint, we've provided some criteria that says if they're able to show that occupational tax certificate from Gwinnett County and comply with all applicable laws, then that's kind of what we're looking for as a minimum to be able to process those renewal certificates. The company, it has a test, Sage's software has a, a test environment for us to be tracking that this week. And the only thing that, from a timing standpoint, I'm not sure if is in place, is the payment processing arm of that, to be able to process it on January 27th. Anybody have any updates on that? So, that, with that, I would recommend pushing the effective date. Let me get a calendar. Pushing the effective date to January 31st to make sure that we are, have everything in order to be able to process everything.
So, it sounds like you have the, the software's kind of up and running, things are running. It's just the merchant, basically, to take the credit card payments is the issue.
Exactly.
Okay. But you think you could have that ready to go by January 31st?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any discussion or questions from the council about that?
I have one, Mayor. It is not, it's related to this, but it's maybe just in the I, I have one, Mayor, it is not, uh, it's related to this, but it's maybe just in the, so there was a, a question I received from a business owner in, in my district in regards to, or maybe in and around Mulberry about specifically this, and then also around, um, this may be off topic, but I just kind of wanna, because it's in the same vein, around, uh, alcohol licensure, so I suspect we'll take a similar approach with, with this as we've done here, is that a completely different piece?
It is possible, that is something that we still need to kind of talk about internally.
Okay, I don't want to necessarily open up the can, I just wanted to kind of understand as related to this, how it falls along, because we're getting some questions from folks.
Uh, those that already have alcohol licenses through, uh, Gwinnett County had to make their application by the end of November, so they have already made their applications for the two, twenty twenty-five year, and so they will have already rece, they should receive or have received their twenty twenty-five alcohol licenses, and we will give full faith and credit to those licenses. The new license, any new licensee that may come would have to wait until the, the adoption of the, uh, zoning resolution and the, uh, the, uh, a further removal of the moratorium for that purpose, but that would probably come in, that's a, that's a number, a lot, very small number.
So if they're in good standing now with Gwinnett County, then it's really just a matter of.
They should have already received their documentation, or the, or at least get it, I, I don't know why they haven't, if they have not, because.
I'll talk, they, they received an email from Gwinnett County, says probably a lot of detail, but I'll talk with you after.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And new ones we, we will need to come up with a process.
Hundred percent, yeah, thank you.
All right, and then, um, so that, Ms. Kiefer, that deals with obviously the occupational tax ticket, what about the final exemption plats there in item two?
Yes, so the, we are wanting to, um, work with applicants to, um, as we have the capabilities to address various items, to, um, be able to request of, of you all to be able to, uh, lift the moratorium on those aspects, because final plats, um, that have gone entirely through review and only need signatures, we're not having to take in fees, we're not having to issue permits or anything, um, this is one thing, um, that we saw, uh, was a, was kind of a reasonable lift of something that we could accommodate right now, so we've put in kind of some, uh, criteria to be able to process those, um, so that it's not just kind of open season, but to be able to move some projects along as we can.
Any questions about, from the council about that, the final exemption class requiring only final signatures and allowing those permitted processes to continue?
It's just things that were essentially done.
Exactly.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to make a comment, Mayor, that Rebecca, you and the team, thank you guys very much, because you guys have come in
A lot.
very quickly and create stability other where, where there, it was a little bit of chaos, so thanks, and thanks for making smart decisions like this to allow folks that are in Mulberry to keep allowing to do business.
Appreciate it.
Uninterrupted, so thank you.
Okay, um, then I will make a motion to amend resolution twenty twenty-five oh one fifteen, where it says January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, as the, uh, the date lifting the, um, the occupational tax moratorium, I will make that, uh, make a motion to amend that to say January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Thank you, um, any other discussion on that amended? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all in favor, all opposed, and it's unanimous, uh, that the resolution is hereby amended, um, I will entertain a motion to, for the resolution.
Can I do it?
Uh.
Fifteen. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five zero one dash fifteen as amended.
Okay, um, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all in favor, all opposed, all right, it's unanimous, resolution twenty twenty-five oh one fifteen, which lifts the moratorium in those two aspects dealing with occupational tax certificates and the final exemption plats that only require final se, signature is hereby adopted. Okay, um, we have, uh, item I, and then we've got to return back to the ordinances, um, item I is a, is a resolution that I will, am presenting to you, it's a resolution, proposed resolution twenty twenty-five zero one would be sixteen. Um, this would allow, uh, so as we get set up, uh, for those of you that are in the crowd, um, basically, obviously, there's, there's little stuff the city needs, right, things like silly stuff, like Post-it notes, or pens, or, or things like that, and instead of having to come to the council every single time the staff that works here, um, and, and get us to vote on whether we can buy a five dollar pack of pens, the request is that maybe we would just allow a certain level to where the mayor, the Mayor Protem, they could call us, just approve the purchase, and then we could kind of say it's okay and continue, and so my, my request to the council is maybe allowing that, so we do not have to slow them down on the business standpoint, I did not leave, I left it blank for the amount, um, I wanted that to be up for discussion of what you guys felt comfortable with, um, and so does anybody have a proposal of what amount they would feel comfortable with for, um, the, for us to just get verbal authority from the mayor, Mayor Protem, for the, for the staff to make a purchase?
Uh, I think the, one question, I think what we're talking about is mostly just standard course of business stuff, right?
Correct, things like, for example, like Comcast is a hundred and forty dollars a month, like, so we don't have to come and vote on that, you know, things that are the everyday items.
Yeah, the, the proposal I'd, I'd make is a thousand dollars.
Okay.
I was gonna suggest five hundred.
It's up to you guys, doesn't matter, what do you, obviously, is there, if we do five hundred, is there, is that gonna limit, or is that gonna, is that gonna bring it back to the, where we have to do a vote substantially more times?
I don't know, but if you're buying Post-it notes, you've had, I'll buy six hundred dollars worth of.
Well, in fairness, I think it's gonna be more of like, if they go to Staples and buy all the office supplies, right, it's not, we're not just going and buying just Post-it notes, that's right.
One, one thing I, you know, this could apply to things in this office, like, um, a furniture, or a, a piece of a desk, or, or chairs, or something along those lines, that may exceed the five hundred or.
That might, yeah.
Um, and we can always, uh, i- if, if there's an issue, um, there can always be a amendment to this resolution, or a new resolution to reduce that, or even increase that, um, and, and we don't know what we don't know about purchasing, um, or what we need to purchase rather, um, so, I mean, I would be okay with either, I think a thousand dollars gives a little bit more latitude, um, everything is still public information.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, you know, all funds are accounted for, and, um, will be audited at the end of the year as well, um, so that was my rationale, and in my, my day job, um, my limit is twenty-five hundred as a director, um, with my purchase card, so just to give you an idea of where the city would land versus, you know, obviously, it's a much different city, but that's kind of where we're at.
Shields.
Sure, okay.
I'll go with a thousand, so.
You go with a thousand?
Yeah.
All right.
All right, um, then I will go ahead and add that in, um, as a thousand dollars as the purchase limit without council approval, um, I, I, I prefer someone else to make the motion besides me, or.
I can make the, yeah, I'll make the motion, yeah. I'd like to, uh, make a motion, is it sixteen?
Sixteen, yes.
Like to make a motion to amend resolution twenty twenty-five oh one sixteen, and to include language, uh, that reads, provided that the total cost of each purchase does not exceed one thousand dollars, I'd like to insert a thousand dollar, which is currently blank.
Uh, do I have a second?
Just a second.
Thank you, Councilmember Shields, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all in favor, all opposed, all right, it's unanimous, resolution twenty twenty-five oh one sixteen, uh, authorizing purchases up to a thousand dollars, um, with approval, verbal, or written approval by the mayor, and Mayor Protem is hereby adopted. Okay, let us now backpedal, and let's go back to those ordinances, so I will turn it over to you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, if I can redirect back to, uh, section I and, uh, ordinance C, that would be twenty-five oh one fifty-seven, the second read of an ordinance, the city of Mulberry creating a zoning, resolution, creating zoning for the city adoption of zoning map and adoption of Gwinnett County zoning cases, the first read was January first, two thousand twenty-five, this would be scheduled for a public hearing, there'll be two more that are essentially the same, I'd like to turn it over to the planning director now and let her explain to you the minor changes from the first read that we have on this, and it will annure to the other two reads, uh, on the other two successive ordinances we'll ask you to adopt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray, um, so, uh, this U D O draft, um, is effectively very similar to, um, what the citizens are used to from, um, Gwinnett County with some minor changes, and then some minor changes from, uh, first read that I'll enumerate for you, um, first, the, um, some provisions related to planning commission and, um, zoning board of appeals, and that, uh, they would be seated and, uh, effective uh, upon the mayor's signature of those boards, um, being named, um, the positions being named, as well as, um, establishing authority and, um, basic ethics, um, within those provisions. Um, we, from the U D O, removed the construction board of appeals in favor of all of those appeals being heard by the zoning board of appeals, um, just as a single body to hear, um, a set of appeals, um, added the, uh, and then added minor sections, um, from other land development regulations, just to ensure that the, the city was fully covered in, um, various aspects of, um, land development from prior ordinances.
Any questions from the council, uh, from Ms. Kiefer regarding ordinance twenty-five oh one fifty-seven?
I have a quick question, uh, twenty-five oh one fifty-seven, the two boards are planning and zoning, is that?
Planning commission and zoning board of appeals.
Planning commission, zoning, got it. Thank you.
And then planning commission is what we were talking about, right, where we referenced that we were all gonna make a couple appointments to that, yes, okay.
And the, the board of appeals is, did you say that that's appointed members as well, or?
They are, yes, it's a quad judicial board to hear, um, relief from the ordinance.
In the timeline of this, Rebecca, that, uh, obviously, that we're actively in discussions on planning, but the zoning board, well, we have a board torn in place right now, right, so.
Right, yes.
Any other questions about ordinance twenty-five oh one fifty-seven? Hearing none, there, there's a public comment section for this one as well, so, um, is there anyone, uh, same as before, we'll do those that want to speak in favor and those that are opposed, um, so, all right, would anyone like to speak in favor of ordinance twenty-five oh one fifty-seven? Hearing none, I'll close public comment for those in favor, would anyone like to speak in opposition of ordinance twenty-five oh one fifty-seven? Hearing none, I will close public comment, um, then I will make a motion, uh, to, uh, adopt ordinance twenty-five oh one fifty-seven, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all in favor, all opposed, all right, it's unanimous, ordinance twenty-five oh one fifty-seven is hereby adopted.
The next item we have is item G under section I, this is twenty-five oh one ninety-five, this is second read of an ordinance, the city of Mulberry, Georgia, creating a zoning resolution, creating zoning for the city, adoption of zoning map and adoption of Gwinnett County zoning cases, first read was held in this case, on this, on this ordinance, on January second, two thousand twenty-five, there was a public hearing required in that, if the, uh, if the council would desire, uh, the, the planning director could, uh, reaffirm what the change is, but the changes in this second read are the same as she spoke to in ordinance twenty-five oh one fifty-seven. There will be a, a public hearing required.
Thank you, would anyone like, in the public, like to speak in favor of ordinance twenty-five oh one ninety-five? Hearing none, I'll close public comments for those in favor, would anyone like to speak in opposition of ordinance twenty-five oh one ninety-five? Hearing none, I'll close public comment, um, so at this point, is there any other questions or discussion from the council? All right, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five oh one ninety-five, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a vote, all in favor, all opposed, all right, by a vote of five, ordinance twenty-five oh one ninety-five is hereby adopted.
The last case we have would be, uh, L and twenty-five oh one one thirty-three, uh, this is a second read of an ordinance, uh, the city of Mulberry, Georgia, creating a zoning resolution, creating zoning for the city, adoption of zoning map and adoption of Gwinnett zoning cases, this is, the first read was held on this on January third, two thousand twenty-five, this is also the ordinance that, um, was amended to, uh, as well as the ordinance in one twenty-nine, where it was amended to have second read on it rather than first read, and, but the first read was on January third, two thousand twenty-five, the, uh, ordinance that's presented today is the same ordinance that you've already heard from on, by the planning director, the amendments to the ordinance are, are the same as the ones that you previously adopted in the, prior to adoptions of this zoning resolution, it will, again, will require a public hearing.
All right, is there anyone that'd like to speak in favor of ordinance twenty-five oh one one thirty-three? Hearing none, I'll close the public comments for, uh, those in favor, would anyone like to speak in opposition of ordinance number twenty-five oh one one thirty-three? Hearing none, I will close the public comments, um, at this time, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five oh one one thirty-three, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all in favor, all opposed, by a vote of five, ordinance number twenty-five oh one one thirty-three is hereby adopted. I believe that concludes the ordinances, correct, Mr. Riley?
That concludes everything on the agenda that I know of, except for executive session.
Okay, um, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight, um, I'm gonna tell you what's gonna happen for those of you that have not been to a meeting, we're gonna ret, uh, retreat into what's called, um, executive session, uh, we're gonna go into where, we're just, the five of us are gonna talk about two things, one's litigation, another is, um, is employment, uh, so for the two, two things, now, you are welcome to stick around and stay, um, we, you, it's, it's open to the public, you can sit in here, um, we're gonna go to a different place to discuss that, we will come back in here, and if there's any items we have to basically adopt from that executive session, we will, if not, we will just vote to, uh, basically to adjourn at that point, so I don't really know how long it's gonna take, I know, every time I think I know, I, it takes way longer than I thought, um, so basically, what's gonna happen is you're welcome to stay, but at this time, this is probably a good time to, to head on out, so at this time, um, I'll, does anyone want to make a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of litigation and employment.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? All right, I, we'll call a vote, all in favor, all opposed, all right, at this time, we'll go into its executive session, for those that are leaving, thank you for coming tonight, thank you for the tight quarters, I appreciate it.